Good evening, everyone. If I could ask you to take your seat, please. It is six o'clock. It is Thursday, February 16th, Board of Commissioners meeting, and I have asked tonight, Commissioner Fendig to lead us in our invocation, and Commissioner Swett to lead us in the pledge. If you would stand with me, please.
All right, thank you. It's great to live in the Golden Isles, and people stay out there. I think Turkey, Ukraine, all the disasters that are going on, people's lives disrupted, we can come together pretty much in harmony and appreciate where we're at and who we have around us. Let's give thanks. Lord in Jesus' name, we do thank you. Mercy is distributed as you desire, as you see it, at the consequence of humans. We pray for mercies and love and support for those under duress, wherever they may be. We appreciate this gathering tonight. We ask that your wisdom reign amongst us. Good for our community will rise up out of all its proceedings, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for general business.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Clark. Yes, sir.
Number four had the county manager selection for assistant county manager. Did the county manager want to make any comment?
Are you making a motion to pull that for discussion?
Well, I'm just asking.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Tonight, we have numerous public hearings. The first is item number five, Consider the Application for Abandonment of a Portion of First Avenue Right-of-Way in the Glen Haven subdivision on St. Simons, generally being the remaining First Street right-of-way north of Atlantic Avenue, AB 4700. And Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Paul Andrews, your county engineer. Item before you is, as you said, a request to abandon a portion of right-of-way in Glen Haven. This is First Avenue north of Atlantic. It's dedicated to the county with the original subdivision plat. The, its current use is, south end is unopened and grassed area. North end is used as, as part of the commercial development. The new pharmacy, can't think of the name, and
Frederica Pharmacy.
Frederica Pharmacy, thank you. And the Frederica House back up to it. Could continue to be used for access to the adjacent parcels. And it was brought at y'all's request to clarify ownership and use in that area. The Frederica House, Fred House LLC has, it's been on their tax parcel for several years. So this abandonment, similar to the one that we, y'all did last year on Sylvan Drive, clears up some questions of title. This is the area. Frederica Road, Atlantic, this is the section of First. This is the commercial, the gas station, Frederica Pharmacy, Frederica House, and single-family residence. So, looking from Atlantic, looking north, the grassed area, I'm guessing that that's just residual overgrowth. It didn't look planted. And from what was formerly Maple Street right-of-way, looking south, this is part of the right-of-way and continues over this way into the parking drive aisle. On the other side of that fence structure, this is the Frederica Pharmacy, the rear of the building. See, there's some walkway and access to, to the rear doors and rear access window. Appears that this walkway is actually on the, on the property of the commercial establishment, the right-of-way would be, looks like would be over here somewhere. George Power does have utilities in the area, and Glen County has identified that area as potentially used in the future to solve some drainage issues as we move into tackling drainage in Glen Haven subdivision. Did not receive public comments and possible actions with the possible motion.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Commissioners, any questions before we open the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. It will be limited to 30 minutes to each opposing side. Each individual speaker will have five minutes to speak, and if you represent a group, if you would speak for that group, and then just, we do have a number of, of hearings tonight, so if you could keep your remarks concise, and we appreciate your cooperation. This being a public hearing, we will now open this for anyone that would like to speak against this AB 4700 First Street right-of-way abandonment. Anyone that would speak against it, please come forward and state your name.
I'm Julian Smith. I live on St. Simons Island. I am neither opposed to this or in favor of it. I'm speaking tonight because I've looked at this parcel, rather at this right-of-way. I, I know the, I understand what the ownership is, but there is a county right-of-way between those two streets running east and west. And the north end of the right-of-way, as the county engineer mentioned, but did not show it clearly, there is a very high fence blocking the county right-of-way. There's also a dumpster sitting in part of the right-of-way. What I would like to have clarified, have you all clarify, someone clarify, is if you abandon this right-of-way, what's going to happen? Is there going to be some building there, up to whatever setback there is? What happens next? That's not in any of the documents I have read. So, do what you must do, but please monitor what is going to happen with that. Now, let me mention, since I don't know whether there was ever a permit issued for that fence, which blocks a county right-of-way. So, how did that happen? Was it, was this allowed, et cetera? I wish code enforcement would pay attention to more things in this county, because we've got a lot of people building or blocking right-of-ways on the mainland and on St. Simons. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would speak against First Street abandonment, AB 4700, to speak against? Hearing none, seeing none, we will close that portion of the hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak in favor of AB 4700 First Street abandonment, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Chairman, my name is Tom Mitchell. I have owned that, my partner and I have owned that property since 1990, and we pay taxes on it since 1990, and we feel like that it's our right to have this abandoned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would come up and speak in favor of AB 4700 First Street abandonment? Anyone else to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, because this comes up a lot, Mr. Attorney, will you just elaborate on the difference of a right-of-way, an unplatted road, and an easement, just so people, we get these in various requests, so people understand the differences in what we're doing tonight?
Certainly, Commissioner. That's a very good question. It does come up often. So
Mr. Attorney, please speak directly into the mic, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. In this case, the county has an easement. We have a right-of-way easement for an unopened alley or a road. And from time to time, for these unopened alleyways, applicants, or sometimes the county will initiate an abandonment of a road, a right-of-way that it doesn't need, doesn't use, and it's up to the board to decide if it no longer wants to carry that easement for right-of-way purposes. The county does not own the dirt here. In some roads, in some cases, we own the dirt. And if we did, that's not the process we'd follow here tonight. We would not abandon a road in this context, or in this sense, in this process, that we own the dirt. In this case, in the next case, following this, we have an easement, which is an overlay. We have a right to use it for right-of-way purposes, and when it's no longer needed for right-of-way purposes, the county has the option to abandon that overlay, that layer of use. So that's all you're being asked to do tonight. You're not being asked to sell or give away the land. You're just being asked to abandon your right-of-way interest, your right to use it for right-of-way purposes. That's all. And if the board feels like that's appropriate, you can approve it, and that's what's before you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Any other questions, any other discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. The, so, the dirt is owned by whom, and is it taxed, since we don't own it?
Oftentimes, the dirt, well, the traditional method is a method where, you know, a half goes to each adjoining landowner. That's a normal process. That is not always the case. In this case, you have an, you know, the gentleman who spoke, Mr. Mitchell, they are claiming all of it, that they've been paying taxes on it for, for years. So in this case, they're claiming that, and the county's not going to be in a position to say yes or no to that. We do recognize that they've been paying taxes on it. They have a quitclaim deed to it. But, so that would, you know, that would be, you know, I think, a deviation from the typical half and half. Half goes to this property owner, half goes to that property owner. This case seems to be unique, but that'll be up to that property owner to, to work through those details on their own. We are simply saying, and we're not, you know, sometimes we will issue quitclaim deeds, but sometimes we'll abandon it and just let that abandonment speak for itself. Mr. Andrews spoke to an abandonment of Sylvan Drive a year ago or so, where the county said, "We are abandoning it, but we are not going to be the determiner or arbiter of who owns what out there." And that will be up to the landowners to sort through themselves. And that's what we're doing here tonight, or what the board is being asked to do here tonight. Not necessarily decide who claims what or what, just that the county no longer claims a right-of-way use for it.
Any other questions?
Just want to make a clarification, and then that's a lot of what we've been doing on e-speech, with a lot of
That's correct.
So people understand. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the abandonment of a portion of the unopened First Avenue right-of-way between Atlantic and Maple, and the Glen Haven subdivision is shown on the exhibit.
Second.
All right. Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Tostes, and any other discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number six, Consider an application for abandonment of a portion of Third Avenue and Ash Street right-of-way in the Glen Haven subdivision on St. Simons, generally including Ash Street north of 302 Magnolia and Third Avenue between 302 and 214 Magnolia. This is AB 5098. The supporting documentation updated February 16th, 2023, to include citizens' comments that were received prior to five o'clock on February 15th, 2023. Again, Mr. Andrews?
Commissioner Paul Andrews, county engineer. Just for a little bit of clarification, what is being presented is the abandonment request as the county received it. We have been through a lot of processes. It started in 2017. It was resubmitted to reflect new ownership and a new layout of the abandonment request. But the, the information that is being presented to you is, is based on the abandonment request. So that's the Waterston's family are the applicants abandoning the portion of Third Street. It too was part of the original dedication of the subdivision, or dedicated as the original subdivision. Third Avenue is currently being used for utilities, pedestrian access via private bridge that was, had been installed by the adjacent subdivision. And Ash Street is currently used to, as access to the rear parcels adjacent to it. It's unopened, but it has been cleared to the point where access can be gained. The future uses, as it, as they sit, are continuing to access to the adjacent parcels. Note to you that the county had, has received a right-of-way permit application for use of the Ash Street right-of-way by one of the neighbors, for them to be able to access the rear of their property. County hasn't acted on that since this abandonment. We knew this abandonment was going to the board. It's in, part of the recommendations to be reflected there. Again, they, it originally started in 2017. Since that time, the survey has been modified to include 15-foot holdout that reflected on the plat that was resubmitted, and the change of ownership and applicants. As a note, the county has recently opened Third Avenue for pedestrian access. We installed a, county installed a rock pathway. This is the area generally requested for abandonment. It is, this is color-coded version of their plat. It, it was requested in three parcels. One large parcel to include Ash Street, a parcel adjacent to the Waterston's tax parcel on this side, and track number three, or parcel number three, is a portion adjacent to the Waterston's property on this side, leaving a 15-foot portion of, of Third Avenue unabandoned. This is a picture of Third Avenue from Magnolia. This was today, this is the, the rock pathway that has recently, recently been installed by the county. The bridge, pedestrian bridge sits back here. This is Ash, Ash Street, looking west from Third. Waterston's house is on this side. You can see Dunbarton Drive running parallel to Ash here. This is the area that had been cleared. There are underground utilities in Third Avenue, and Glen County has potential use for Third Avenue for drainage right-of-way. Comments that were received, these are the telephone comments. This, this information was emailed out to you yesterday evening. This is the same information. And public comments, emails received, items one through five were in the email that y'all received yesterday evening. Item six came in early enough for me to send it out to you this morning. Items seven and eight Item seven and eight came in this afternoon, I was not able to get them distributed to you in time enough for y'all to have the opportunity to review. Mr. Morgan was in opposition, had some discussion regarding his, his reasoning for that opposition. And Ms. Berlin, it was submitted as being in support, but the request was that they want the bridge abandoned, which is not part of this request, and not in public right-of-way. To continue that access, the intent, I believe the intention of her email was that she felt she wanted the, that pedestrian access to continue, and further doesn't want additional houses or foliage cut down in the area behind the houses on Magnolia. This is page one of the staff recommendations, they're the same that were in the report, happy to go through them in detail if you'd like, or...
Anything else?
We've got more staff recommendations on page two. I'm happy to read them if you'd like, they're, these are all the ones that were in the original staff report. If there's questions...
Should those be read into the record, or is that necessary? I think we've had them in our papers.
Okay, okay. This is, again, possible actions and possible motion.
Anything else, Mr. Andrews?
No, just, I'm sorry, just that the motion as presented reflects those, would refer back to those conditions.
Okay. Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, is there any questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing, same rules apply. Those that would wish to speak in opposition to Third Avenue and Ash, this is AB 5098. If you wish to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name for the record, please, and you would have five minutes.
James Fraser, I'm president of the Dunbar Creek Plantation Property Owner Association. We have over 60 residents that we actually are part of our association. I thank you for the opportunity to address this issue, it's, it has been hanging out with us since 2017, it's been at every one of our meetings, every one of our, either board meetings or our annual meetings, we never knew where it was going, and finally getting to see it come to fruition, and like, put this to bed for good would make some sense. It was an agenda item at our annual meeting, it turned out we had an annual meeting on 12 February last Sunday, and this item was on the agenda. We, we talked about it, a motion was made and seconded it, and there was lots of discussion that, as a matter of fact, that we want to deny that this, this application, that we do not see this application being in either our good or the public good, and we're the adjacent property owners. When you look at that property, you saw where that street right there that curves up at the top, that's Dunbarton Drive. That bridge is on property owned by Dunbar Creek Plantation, so it's not going to be abandoned, by the way, that's going to be there for good. We built that, actually, we built it the first time with lumber from the hurricane on the back of those vehicles that were picking up all the hurricane parts. Little did we know that was not treated lumber, and we had to rebuild it six months ago. So we now have a solid treated thing, it won't go away. Our vote was unanimous, and members came to the conclusion that approving the application was not only not in our best interest, but the only person served, that was, that served was actually the applicant. And they viewed it only as a, they were the only benefactor, they also believed, they saw this as a land grab, some of a controlling issue, we just, you know, there's no, no benefit to any of the public as we see it. The members believe that Third Avenue should be removed from the abandonment, and, you know, the bridge property is extensively used, by the way, and that street is used a lot. If you haven't seen it, you'd be surprised how many people come down that street every day. I can imagine right now somebody walking their dog across the bridge as we sit here and talk about it, and it's that, that well-used. Even at night, I mean, we're talking about even putting some lights out there because it is dark down that street, we hope to have people use it all the time. For locally and within the neighborhoods, it's called the Friendship Bridge, because it's a bridge between Glen Haven and Dunbar Creek. So people move back and forth both ways, both moving from Dunbar, Dunbar Creek over to Glen Haven, from Glen Haven back to Dunbar. We have a lot of walkers, we even have people, we don't know where they come from, by the way, don't have to, don't have to be one of our subdivision people to come across our bridge, and we have no toll, we don't plan to have one. We actually think Third Avenue should be taken off this, as I saw the motion, it isn't there, so I'm assuming it's no longer there, but Third Avenue is, is very well-used, and our association has agreed that if, if Third Avenue is not part of this, they will work with the county and do everything we can to beautify that particular piece of property. We're willing to have a fundraiser, and to get money to be able to put in some plants and trees and other kinds of things, because our real desire in life is to make our neighborhood and the adjoining neighborhoods the best they can be, and we have a record of having done that. We actually are an award-winning neighborhood, keep Golden Isles beautiful, awarded us in the second quarter of 2020, had no clean sweep award for the things that we had done. We have an extensive program, we work with, with St. Clair, because we have a lake that we have to take care of, surprisingly for some of you, that lake takes about $8,000 a year to take care of, and it is a retention pond, and your stormwater's coming into our lake and bringing algae with it and so forth, so we have some, some things we have to do. Ash Street is, at the other end, by the way, if you should have seen it, and you can't see it down, down at the bottom there, it was clear-cut by the people who built those lots. And so now we have a clear-cut thing, we only have 40 foot between Ash Street and Dunbarton Drive. So we ran a fundraiser, and we actually, with our neighbors and our, and our folks in Dunbar Creek, were able to get together $8,000, and we planted 54 cypress trees in that area between the two of them, so you don't look out your window and, and see a house, you know, 20, 40 feet away. Bottom line, we are very happy and satisfied with our neighborhood and everything surrounding it. We do not view the amendment to be in our or the public's best interest, we would like, we believe this ought to be denied. Thank you. Are there any questions, or me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question, where is the bridge? It's not showing up.
I'm Julian Smith again.
Mr. Commissioner, Andrew.
I'm sorry?
There's a question. Commissioner, the, the bridge sits right, right here.
Okay, thank you.
And it just crosses, there's a ditch, I'm sorry, there's a ditch that it crosses.
Okay. I'm Julian Smith again, and before I object to this application, I want to let someone up there know, the transmitter for my headset has gone silent, so I cannot hear what is going out over the airwaves, and my hearing aid does not work well in this room. Okay, getting to this application. This is sad. The people in these neighborhoods, these two subdivisions, have been using this right-of-way to get back and forth toward or from the, the lake or pond on Dunbarton. I walked along several hundred feet of Ash Street, walked west until I came to a makeshift barricade. Now that is a, as far as I can tell from the map and from the tax map, that is a public right-of-way, and the public should have access. What happens, what is happening here apparently, and has happened elsewhere, is that people who, whose properties back up to alleys don't want other people using those alleys or those old right-of-ways. So the folks who are applying for this abandonment, they own a undeveloped parcel behind one of the, one of those houses on Magnolia. And if you abandon this property to them, then they're going to have, what, an acre, three-quarters of an acre of property that they can access only through the abandoned right-of-way. What is going to happen to the property you abandon? I think you have to ask the applicants that question, and I think you have to have some conditions imposed on this abandonment if you do it, and I hope you won't. So if you have not walked along Ash Street, the section of Ash Street that is, that the applicants want you to abandon, you should, you should not vote on this until you have noticed that is a lovely area, trees on either side of the area where you can walk. Please don't do this. Thank you. And I hope somebody will come fix my headset.
Is, is there any possibility of fixing the headset? All right. Anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to AB 5098? State your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir, Christopher Sanning. I am the property owner to the adjacent side on the left of that picture. We live at 314 Magnolia Street, and when we bought our home, we bought the lot behind it as well, that was an unfinished, buildable lot of land. When we first purchased the home, we contacted Glen County to figure out how to gain access to that land so that we could clear it, and at current, and since we've moved there, we've wanted to make it a larger backyard for ourselves. Chuck Flowers at the county suggested that we work with the neighbors, as long as we didn't have to remove any trees or that sort of thing, it should be fine. We began that process, and the applicant was really accommodating to move some of their stuff off of the Ash right-of-way and Third right-of-way, but we were unable to come to kind of a long-term agreement for us to utilize the portion that they had cleared on Ash and Third. I applied for a driveway permit last April so that I could have legal access to access the back, our back lot, and I've just kind of been on hold since, and really, we just oppose for the reason that the applicant has been utilizing those right-of-ways for themselves, and I'd like the opportunity to as well.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in opposition?
My name is Joe Lowly, and I live down the street at 415 Magnolia Street, and just real simply, talking to all our neighbors, the general consensus, and there's quite a number of us here, the general consensus is that the neighborhood doesn't want this, that walkway is used a lot, and currently, you know, it hasn't always been used correctly, it has sometimes been blocked by parking there by some of the people that live near there. Currently, there's a trailer on the back on that Ash Street lot, you know, so it's not being used the way it should be at all times, and, and so for the most part, the neighborhood would just like it to stay the way it is, be able to access the bridge over to Dunbar, and not have any of it abandoned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in opposition? State your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Whitney Morrison, I just wanted to second, I know there's already a Dunbar Creek representative, Dunbar Creek Plantation neighborhood, but I just wanted to second the opposition of the abandonment. It's a great opportunity for community to be fostered and for families to pass by back and forth, and it would be a great loss to lose that opportunity. That's it.
Thank you. Let's state your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir, my name is Stacy Lane, and I am the homeowner at 208 Magnolia, so where Third Street is, and then next to that is 214, which is also the applicant's lot, so I'm right here. My, the window over my kitchen, or over my, yeah, my kitchen sink looks onto Third Avenue, or where Third Avenue should be, and so I can see people walking, I mean, I wish that I would have thought ahead and sat one day and just counted how many people use that right-of-way to access the bridge and to go back and forth between the neighborhoods. With the construction of the new park in Glen Haven, there's even more people that are coming through there to access the park. So I think it's extremely important to maintain county ownership of that area, just to preserve it for what it's currently being used for. The applicant has for many years, and it's ironic, because when you look at the, at the, at the map on the county, what's it called, the appraisal thing, so when you look at that, you can even see that there is a maroon GMC Yukon that is parked where Third Street should be, and that's the applicant's employee that's there every day. So now that they're not letting their employee park there, they're parking on that empty lot, which is fine, because that's their land, but the applicant has used Third Avenue as well as Ash back there for their own personal use for as long as I've been around, which isn't that long, but even I've had friends that live in the neighborhood, and you've always seen that stuff there, effectively blocking it, it's quite inconvenient. Now that the applicant has purchased 214 Magnolia, so they've moved a trailer there and store some of their things there, that's great, but they've also kept a small utility trailer on the Ash area, I'll keep pointing, I don't know why, on the Ash area back here, which is not theirs, so as to block anybody else's access to anything back here. So I feel like they've been very intentional about what they're doing, and, and a little bit misleading in, in the way that they have presented things, and I think it would be extremely detrimental to Glen Haven as well as to Dunbar Creek for either of these pieces to be abandoned by the county.
Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, and Mr. Andrews mentioned in discussing the First Street thing that, about drainage in Glen Haven, and I can assure you that if there's anything that could aid drainage in Glen Haven on that end, on Magnolia, it's going to have to do with that area back there. There's already a drainage ditch in between Glen Haven and, and Dunbar Creek that runs parallel to Ash Street right there. So I would think that allowing private ownership of that would not be good for potential future drainage issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition?
Can I have 30 seconds?
You've already spoken, sir.
But I get five minutes, I thought.
You, you used all but about three seconds, okay.
Hi, my name is Andy Jenkins, I just wanted to point out one thing about Ash Street, there are seven properties here, this is Ash Street here, I live here at 320 Magnolia Street, I have essentially a buildable lot here, there's essentially a buildable lot here, as well as Christopher Sanning's extra lot is buildable, and there were, if Ash Street were abandoned, there would be no way to access these lots, other than coming in, excuse me, other than coming in the other way, so I just wanted to point that out as well. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else to speak in opposition?
My name is Tom Coleman, we've lived in Glen Haven, or had a house in Glen Haven for the last 12 years. I'm retired now, so I get out a lot and walk, I've got a 12-year-old dog that doesn't know he's a dog. We go all the way around, and we go right by the Third Avenue, sometimes we cross over and go into Dunbar. There are dozens of people that use this every day, and if you do the abandonment, that, all that'll go away. It's, it's not right, so it's not in the best interest of the public. So it's not in the best interest of the public to approve the abandonment. Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak in opposition? Anyone else to speak in opposition? Last call. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Those that wish to speak in favor of A B five zero nine eight, please come forward, state your name for the record to speak in favor.
I represent the applicant. I was hoping I might have a chance to speak before the public hearing started. My name is Desiree Watson. I represent the trust, the Waterson Trust. And I think what I need to say right off the bat, that the recommendation from your county engineer, Mr. Paul Andrews, his recommendation is not to abandon Third. We have no opposition to not abandoning Third Street. So all the dialogue and all the comments that relate to Third really are not applicable because he says not to abandon it, and we have no opposition to not abandoning Third. The county has put crush and run in there, that's fine, and the trust is perfectly okay with that. It was mentioned that, so really what we're just talking about is Ash Street in terms of the motion. And if you had read the comments and the recommendations and the conditions, you'll notice that the abandonment of Ash Street is going to be non-buildable. It's prohibited to be built on. There will be no combining and building on that property. It's purely for preservation of the area, for quiet enjoyment from the people who live on that area. And there was talk about a trailer being on the right of way. The trailer, the trust owns property sort of in a triangle underneath the Ash Street. That trailer's on their property. It's not in the right of way. So I'm not sure that folks understand exactly where the right of way is. As for it being cleared, the county hasn't cleared, this is a, as Aaron said, this is a right of way use. In nineteen twenty-nine, it was platted. All the streets were given easements to the county for public use. The county since nineteen twenty-nine has not maintained this area. It's been the trust that has cleared that property. It's been the trust that has cleaned, kept it clean and of debris. There's a fallen tree back there, so I don't know how people think they're going to get back there. But anyway, people say they walk up and down. I doubt that seriously. In the conditions, it talks about if it's abandoned, that the trust will give a drainage easement to the county. So that's important to know. It just seems, they talk about that the employees are parking on Third of the, there was one person that parked, and they parked mostly on the applicant's property with maybe their wheels, bright wheels might have been on. They were not blocking the area. And they no longer park there. They now park on their vacant lot across the street. It's been said that this is a land grab. It's not a land grab because they already own the underlying fee. According to law, subdivision property owners, when they buy their lot, they own the underlying fee. So they're not, you're not giving up any land. All you would be giving up is the right to use it for public use. And like I said, the county hasn't maintained it since nineteen twenty-nine. It's been the trust that's cleared it. People walk on there, they've kept the leaves down, they've kept the brush and the scrubs out and for the use so that there would be quiet enjoyment, not bugs growing back there. And so we're hoping that you will, in fact, go ahead and just abandon Ash Street. And like I said, you'll get the easement that nobody's used or maintained since nineteen twenty-nine. And it would be a quiet enjoyment. It would be hazardous. These people want, they say they have the lots back over there and they want access back there, that those are buildable lots. I don't know if they're buildable lots or not. But anyway, they would have to take their trucks down Third, and then they would truck back behind there. That, if you're talking about a pedestrian area with golf carts and people on bicycles and children on Third, you really don't want truck traffic or any vehicle traffic going down Third to turn down Ash. So we're asking that you please go ahead and abandon Ash so that it can be properly taken care of, continued to be properly taken care of by the trust. Another rumor that was circulating was this is a land grab, and it's going to be, the trust, if it's abandoned, would be sold to developers. I'm through. Okay. Well, I was hoping the applicant would have additional time, but I appreciate your time, and I hope you will abandon the property on Ash. Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor? Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of five zero nine eight? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. And commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to just talk about some of the issues. This is a really tricky situation. I want to make sure people understand what the request is, what's been going on. Third Street with the bridge there was a connection. And the reason why I came to you in the very first meeting when I became commissioner was to go after a park in Glen Haven. Because the volume of traffic and access, I also want to see that continued north towards Seapalm's where you have a walking trail where people don't have to go out, cross Frederico Road and come down the other side, but non-regarding. This was the motivation and the realization that this was a heavily tracked, traffic crossroads for neighborhoods and childrens and families and dogs. So then the Watersons, who I like, this sometimes it seems to be personal, and Alan I've known all my life, so it's nothing personal, but Third Avenue is a street. And the reason I had the attorney talk about our previous application, that was property the county doesn't own when we abandoned behind, for the pharmacy. This is an unopened, platted road, basically unapp, is used for foot traffic. It does have some vehicular traffic. So there is a difference. This is county-owned property. It's just not an open road. And the same for Ash. I understand that the Watersons bought that corner piece. Then they bought the tract across on the other side of Third Street. And then they bought, you got your pointer up there?
This is the lot that the residents is on?
That's the residence. That's the next purchase. And then the lot there. So, two lots, I guess, right? Have they combined them yet? I don't think.
They have not.
So there's two lots. So they could combine those lots and have a buildable lot. Is that correct? It's buildable now?
This is a buildable lot as it was original subdivision. These are portions of lots that are currently non-buildable.
So like a lot of properties in Glen Haven and on the south end of the island, that's a landlocked lot on a public road. It's not an unopened road. The same with Mr. Channing's property next to that. He went, bought his residence, and then he bought the lot behind it. What you see, same situation. He has a buildable lot, but it's on an unopened road. Now, if you notice the purchases of those roads, and I'm not saying anything but just the facts, not judging on my motives, that those are individual lots whose backyards, they can't walk out to Ash, they can't get to Ash because the Watersons bought the back of three and a half lots. Mr. Channing bought a lot that covers the back of his lot and a neighbor's lot. So it's really a kind of odd situation that's developed in there. We had a similar situation over on Palm Drive when we had a lady wanted to get a bamboo request, and it's an unopened road in there. We had the same issue about unopened access to lots if we made those abandments. I mean, we have the right to do what is asked, but it's very tricky. I'm a little concerned because right now the Watersons do use Third Street or have to get to Ash, to get to that unopened lot where they park an RV and trailers and other items back there in that unopened lot. And they have all, they've cleared that area back there. And the creek actually behind Mr. Channing's lot, the ditch, kind of cuts in really close to the property there. So it's not like Ash is a full accessible road all the way. It's just a tricky situation. So I just want to point that out to see if y'all have some thoughts or discussions, and then I'll loop back around. But, or maybe the county attorney might want to weigh in on some of this.
Certainly. So just a point of clarification, Commissioner Fendig, the county does not own this dirt either. It has a similar easement as the prior abandonment application where we have a right of way easement over it because it was platted and given to the county as an easement, but not ownership. So we don't own the dirt. And similar rules would apply where the abandonment process would result in the underlying property owner basically having the property unencumbered. So it's almost like an overlay. So it's an overlay of the county's easement, and once the abandonment happens, we take off that layer of right of use. So the question to the commission is, you know, is this in the public's interest or is our public use still served by retaining its easement over these roads? That's your, that's your review tonight. Is this abandonment in the public interest? Or are these properties still being, you know, could they be used by the public or will they be used by the public in the future? That's your question to you tonight. But the county does not own the dirt, just a point of clarification.
Sorry about that. I mean, Ash Street does go all the way down to the other end to it, runs into a paved area also of Ash Street. Right, Paul?
Unopened Ash Street right of way runs westerly until the next block, Ash Street has been opened, and that's where the houses are built. There's a ditch in Fourth right of way that we don't have any crossing on that.
And with, you know, and with the Watersons, I met with Alan and them when I first got elected, and they had told me what they had planned was to make this application to abandon Third and open up Ash, but make it a trust. So it's really tricky. I guess, and I'm just asking for the county attorney, if we don't abandon Ash, then that cuts off access that they're currently using, the use of that property. Is that right, Desiree?
That's how I understand the gentleman was, are we talking about the gentleman who spoke that his access would be cut off?
The parcels, the parcels on this side would still have access to public right of way. Their access would instead of, currently, Ash Street is easier, appears to be an easier way to get to them. But access, public rights access is still available on Fourth and to the other end of Ash Street. But that, the request that has come to the county is to use, was to improve limited-use driveway along this section of Ash.
So Commissioner Fendig, I think the gentleman who spoke earlier was saying they accessed their property back through the proposed abandoned area. But as Mr. Andrews is saying, they also have a right of access or have access through the other street as well. So it wouldn't result in them being landlocked per se.
It's, for clarification, the rights to access this way are there. The ability access is not, is encumbered by the location of the public ditch, I mean, of the county-maintained ditch in Fourth. It's the right of, the ditch runs through the majority of the width of that right of way.
So, Mr. Andrews, so would they need to improve that portion of the area in order to access it? I think that might be Commissioner Fendig's question. Is it already accessible or would improvements need to be made to access that property if the abandoned area was abandoned tonight?
Improvements wouldn't have to be made.
Would have to be.
And that would come under a right-of-way work permit, which is what we have processed to, what would be, how those improvements would look to obtain the access that they needed.
So Commissioner Fendig, for clarification purposes, they could have access via public right of way, but...
Well, right now, they're using Third Street to drive down to go to that lot, is what I'm saying.
That's correct.
And that's a heavily pedestrian area. It's a street, but it's a heavily pedestrian area.
It's being used by, to access those properties behind. Correct.
Okay.
And the alternative access via public right of way would have to be improved for it to be, you know, I guess, practical access.
Do we know how much it would, what the improvements would cost?
I don't know.
Because if we make this decision...
No, so those improvements...
That forces us to make the improvements, right? The county?
It does not, unless, unless it was the...
I'm saying if we want to make it more accessible for the people who live there.
If that's the will of the board, yes, sir. If it was, the county certainly has the right to go in and make improvements to open that area up for the general use of the public, similar to what we recently did in the Third, in the Third Avenue right of way. We improved that with the, with the rock base to improve that access for the people that are using it. Prior to that, it was just, it was dirt and leaves and grass.
And so really, they really don't have access, even though they might have the right, as you say. But without improvements...
Correct.
They wouldn't have access, literally.
And I couldn't speak to what those improvements would cost. It would, right now, the access request that is, that the right-of-way permit access is not to develop this lot, but merely to go in there and open up and grade out an area to where they can occasionally get to the rear yard, this rear parcel for occasional use. It wouldn't be a regular driveway. If somebody had the desire to build on these lots back here, even this lot, that improvement would have to step up to allow for emergency access, I mean, emergency vehicles to access back there as needed. And so that would be a lot more intensive.
But if we do nothing, that, they still have access, which is what everybody else wants to maintain, right?
Right now, they do. Once, if the, if the, if the board takes action to abandon this section of Ash, it no longer is accessible to the public.
But I'm saying if we, if we don't, the folk who are asking for the abandonment still have access.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay.
One... I'm sorry, Commissioner Fendig.
No, that's, I thought you were there, I'm sorry. So the other question is, and I know I did this in my past term, it would be the right of the county commission to also mandate that Third Street from the ditch to Magnolia would be no vehicles, pedestrian only.
I believe that that would be a restriction in the ordinance.
Right.
That, that would be, the county could take action to restrict vehicles in there. We did it temporarily with the barricades. We could step that up.
Well, we just did that a week ago. I mean, the Watersons and associates have been blocking and parking in that alleyway. I happen to have some friends in Glen Haven, and that's how this began going because I get in, getting calls with their cars, and then I found out who the cars belonged to. So what I want to do is protect the integrity of... So what I want to do is protect the integrity of that walking path and make that section from Magnolia to the ditch pedestrian only. So I'm going to make two motions. One is I'm going to deny the request for abandonment of Ash and the portion of Third Street that they've applied for. And then, the second part of the motion would be that from Magnolia to the bridge would be pedestrian traffic only. In other words, vehicles wouldn't be parking in there anymore and blocking. So that would be my motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Rafalski. Any other discussion? All right. We've heard the motion to deny the abandonment of Third Street and Ash and to make Third Street through that portion from Magnolia to the bridge as pedestrian traffic only. Everyone understand the motion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Moving right along. Public hearing, land use for ZM 5350. And please move along as quickly as you can. We've got several more hearings, but thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate your involvement in county government. Okay. We're at item number seven, ZM 5350, Chick-fil-A Brunswick Plan Development District Amendment. Consideration of an application to amend the Regional Shopping Mall Plan Development District GC-10-99 to reduce the development setback line adjoining residential property at 70 Golden Isles Plaza, parcel 03-14986, Jason Tool, CPH LLC, agent for Rex Powell, Chick-fil-A, Inc., owner. And Ms. Leaf, it's up to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 5350. This is a Chick, the existing Chick-fil-A at the corner of Altama Connector and the Spur. They are planning to demolish the existing Chick-fil-A restaurant and build a new restaurant with a reconfigured parking and drive-through area, so it'll look very different from what you see currently. The PD text that applies to this property does state that there is a 50-foot buffer between the residential property and this property, and they are requesting to encroach 15 feet into that, so the remaining buffer would be a 35-foot buffer. The nearest residential structure is 500 feet south of the property line with Chick-fil-A, so it's a good, good distance away. So this is the existing Chick-fil-A. On the right side of the screen, this is the Spur. This is the bank up on the top of the screen, and then the residential property is down this direction, and this is the buffer that would decrease to 35 feet if approved. And this is the proposal. This particular PD text does not require site plan, so a site plan will not go to the Mainland Planning Commission, but they'll be, be able to move forward with their commercial building permit when they're ready to, to build. But this is their current proposal. And these are your possible motions this evening, and the MPC did recommend approval of this application. Happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Tool is representing the applicant tonight. Thank you.
Stephanie, you go back to the picture. On the side reducing from 50 to 35, property owner on that side, what'd they say?
My understanding is they are, they are okay with this. They do not have any concerns.
That's what, that's what I understood, too. Thank you. All right, commissioners, this is a public hearing. Any comments before we open the hearing?
The property, where the buffer is on the other side of the property owner, that, that's a wooded area. Is there any structures on that property?
Yes, there is. This is, yeah, very wooded through here. Let me see if we have another map that shows it a little better. Let's see. It doesn't look like we have the zoning map in here, but it is, it is very wooded. There is a residence, though, about 500 feet away from this property boundary.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Leaf. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? This being a public hearing, any that wish to speak against ZM 5350? Moving the Chick, my, my biggest question, Ms. Leaf, is how long are they going to be closed down? I mean, that's, I think that's what the public really wants to know.
Right, yeah, I have that question, too. We did not know the answer, but hopefully the applicant can share that tonight.
I've got grandkids that just not going to be the same.
Absolutely.
So, all right, ZM 5350, any that wish to speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name.
Julian Smith. This is grotesque. I've eaten at this Chick-fil-A restaurant many times, particularly when I go shopping at Home Depot. It's a perfectly good building. They want a bigger one, I guess, because they want more room for more customers. So they're very successful. So what they're going to do is knock down a perfectly good building, put it into dump trucks, send the dump trucks out on the road, more trucks will come in with material to build a new building. What if that one is, is very successful, too? Where does it end? It's just wasteful. Now, I know you're probably going to approve this. Who wouldn't want a bigger, nicer, newer Chick-fil-A? Well, I don't. Where, where does it stop? There's too much of this going on in Glen County. And I know this is not a popular opinion, but gee, I get to share it. Thank you.
Anyone else that would speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion, and I'll keep my personal comments to myself from that. And those that wish to speak in favor, those that would speak in favor of ZM 5350 Chick-fil-A.
Hi, my name is Jason Tool. I'm with CPH. I am representing Chick-fil-A. To answer the question, that was typically a scrape and rebuild takes about five to six months, so that's about what you're going to see. Also, I will, you know, I can't answer the concern. It is actually not to make more customary, and most of the larger store is actually for the kitchen. They separate out the, the way they do it so that you don't have a, a issue of cross contamination with the chicken, because obviously they're, they're handling raw chicken. So most of the improvements in the larger building is all going into the kitchen area. We do, by doing this, the other thing is obviously to get the double drive-through. You've probably seen those. If you've seen any Chick-fil-A's, it just helps get things more efficient. It also keeps their traffic from backing up into anybody else's property, so it kind of flows through better. So that's really what drives the change more than anything. So, but I'm happy to answer any other questions. We will be, this did come up in the planning board meeting, that there is a requirement for an eight-foot screen wall along that residential buffer. That will be there as well, so that will still be, be implemented, so. But I'm here, happy to answer any questions, but...
Any, anyone else that would come, if you would stay close to the front in case after we close the hearing, there might be questions. Anyone else to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and then commissioners, we're back to you.
I've just got a statement. I saw this done in Wecross. They, what, what it's done, it's made, made, made the building more efficient, because there's two ways to go through, and like you say, it takes the...
It dropped the traffic load off of the Home Depot parking lot.
Thank you.
Yeah. I agree. The cars in there are so tight, this becomes a safety issue, and what y'all doing is eliminating, making it more safe, and I appreciate that. And also, while you're here building, exit 29.
I heard that from the planning board as well, so.
My question is regarding the employees. What's going to happen with them being out of work so long?
So honestly, I, I don't know the full answer. I do know that Chick-fil-A is very good about working with other operators and trying to relocate employees if they can. But to be honest with you, I, since I'm not with Chick-fil-A directly, I can't tell you exactly what would happen with them, so. But I do know they have always been, and other ones that we've done around the state, I know they typically have been very good to their employees as far as what they try to help them with as far as relocation.
All right, commissioners, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proposed zoning decision.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rafalski, a second by Commissioner Clark, to approve the zoning for ZM 5350 Chick-fil-A. Any other discussing? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number eight, ZM 5359, the Verandah's Plan Development District. Consideration of an application to create a new plan development district at 4270 Highway 17 North, parcel 03-00573. The property is currently zoned highway commercial, HC. Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineering, is agent for Charles Wells, the owner. And again, Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. This is ZM 5359, the proposed Verandah's Plan Development. The entirety of this parcel is currently highway commercial. So just to orient you, this is Yacht Road, right here on the, the southern side of the property. This is Highway 17. It's currently under expansion. It's the Stewart Road to, to the top here. So the property is entirely highway commercial. There is a pretty rundown structure, commercial structure that's on the property currently. I think it was a former seafood packing plant, is my understanding. They are proposing to do plan development, mixed use of commercial and multifamily that would be MR, which is a 16 units per acre on this property. And so here are just the highway commercial uses that could be allowed if this is rezoned to the PD. This would be, what would be included in the PD. And these are the MR prohibited uses. So there, this is just a conceptual of what they are looking to do. The, the applicant has a property in Thomasville, Georgia, that they've done a multifamily product, and this is similar to what they would do on this property if this is approved. And this would go through site plan approval if the rezone is approved. And these are your possible motions. And Mr. Jake Hightower from Robert Civil Engineering is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, do we have any questions before we open the public hearing?
How many access points are coming off the highway to the proposed project?
Sure, that, that's a good question, and unfortunately, they, the applicants do not have a concrete answer to that right now from GDOT. They said their preference is to have a new access that would come off of Highway 17 onto the property so that it is not accessing off of Yacht Road. However, you know, with the, the new improvements and widening, they don't have knowledge yet of whether GDOT would approve that. So if GDOT does not approve that access, their access would come off of Yacht Road onto the property.
So with the current zoning, there is no required amount of access?
Correct. Yeah, they, they do, they do have, you know, existing access right, right here that goes into that former packing plant, but, but they were hoping to have something more central to the site.
Wouldn't the Reagan Drive, that crossover on 17, that is completed four-lane as it sits now, right?
Reagan Drive?
Right, right there where the cursor is?
Oh, right here?
That looks like a full access across.
I do not have that answer. Yes, yes, that is correct. Our county engineer stated that.
I mean, on, in our packet, you can blow it up enough to see that that is a full crossing there for Reagan Drive. I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry.
Jake, could you come up front, please? And if you would, go ahead and state your name for the Reagan.
Yes, sir. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering, available to answer any of your questions.
Okay. And with, with that, y'all don't have any site plan done yet, and I know it's premature. I know it's not required yet.
Yes, sir, that's correct. We did do, we did create a conceptual exhibit just to kind of show what we could get with the parking, because there's a wetland component, but we have not gone through a full site plan process. But when we do a site plan, we will coordinate with GDOT to get their opinion on having access across from Reagan Drive. We do believe that with the spacing there, we'd have the required spacing in order to have a D cell lane, but again, it's going to be their jurisdiction, and we'd go through their encroachment process to get that curb cut.
And with that, if that is denied, could you not use the CPAC in the CPAC building, the old?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the way our conceptual is laid out now, is to use that as an access point coming in. There are requirements as to how far you have to get into the property before you take a left-hand turn. It's 100 feet from the asphalt. I think we could make that happen. But like I said, we would prefer to access across from Reagan, but there is that chance we could use that drive. You do get into a little bit of a congestion, because if that's kept as highway commercial, the intention with the developer is here to answer kind of those, those answers in terms of what the intention is for the southern part of that parcel. But if you were to look and see, we could work it out, but it'd be, it'd be difficult to have an entrance come in. We'd, we'd do our best to have an entrance come in to a, an amenity here with a gate before getting into the residential, and then having that service both, both uses. That is another option.
And how, how long will it be before y'all have a GDOT? Have y'all made application? Where, where do you stand in that process?
No, sir. When we go, what we're waiting on is the surveying to complete for our site plan, but what we would do is, when we do our site plan, that's when we would actually do the calculations for the average daily trips per day and figure out the size of that stacking lane that would be required along 17. We'd turn that into GDOT's preliminary information request, and they would let us know kind of their thoughts of that process. But that wouldn't be the fully approved process until we actually go through the full civil design and submit their plans through their, their GPAS portal.
And one last question. And I'm asking these questions now because I know there are people here that are concerned and trying to answer a few questions that might, might help. In your conceptual, do you, what kind of buffer do you have on Old Bell Point Road?
We have the Glen County standard buffer, which is a 10-foot-long right-of-way. So they would have the buffer of, of what's required by Glen County standards right here, and then also the road that would be, so basically, I, I'd say that's probably about 30 to 40 foot of right-of-way, plus that 10-foot from the residences.
And what's the possibility of increasing that buffer?
It's difficult, because the, this is a very large wetland system. You know, there was a request for a 50-foot buffer. If we put a 50-foot buffer in in addition to a right-of-way and a street, then that would probably preclude us from being able to build on this side, and in doing so, would probably keep us from being able to develop the property to get the yield. And it'd be up to the developer to decide if that yield would warrant it a successful product or not.
And one more last question?
Yes, sir.
Are you proposing any access from Old Bell Point Road?
No, sir, not at all. We have not, we, we have no intention of using that. The only thing that we might request at site plan is for an emergency access, but that would be gated with no, that would only be accessible by emergency services.
I have a question. Can you shrink this a little bit? Up on the north end, I think that is Stewart Road up there, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Stewart Road. Now, those three or four lots, those are residential, if I'm not mistaken. What kind of buffer do you have in place for that?
So in between a PD and a residential use, the standard from Glen County is a type A modified buffer, which would be 12-foot along with a six-foot opaque fence. And so that's what we're calling out right now at our zoning.
Well, due to the fact that those are residential lots, and I, I'm willing to think there's some structures on those. In fact, it looks like I see structures on... there's some structures on those, in fact, it looks like I see structures on those, that could be increased.
I would ask that, I defer that to the developer who's here tonight to see if he's amenable to requests. And I would just ask that we specify what the size is, and let him make that decision.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hightower?
Yes, sir.
In the lower part of the parcel, is that a, a natural pond, retention pond, or?
That's an existing pond, yes, sir.
Existing pond, would that be, conceptually, would that be the area of your retention pond?
That would remain, but we would make it much larger. This would not be adequate for the full development. The way that we can utilize wetlands is we can basically make the wetland system larger by incorporating that in our detention. And so whether or not we take this pond and expand it to the north, or we have a drive aisle along this right here with a culvert, and then another detention pond, either way, this is not adequate for that. We'd have to expand this quite drastically up to the north.
Could you show, there's a ditch coming from FLTC?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's the ditch right here.
Is that it? Okay.
Yep, so it's a tidal ditch, and so what they have is they have a culvert right here. I think it's about 24-inch culvert where the site will drain, go through that culvert, and then access to this ditch that runs behind these residences here and out to the marsh.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hightower, isn't there a tidal, a little tidal creek or a little intrusion from high tide into that northern part of the property, or?
Yes, sir, so what this is, this is tidal, just like any other, you know, say Maiden Creek or any, right by, behind Benny's, I'm trying to think of the name of that, right there, everything we have around us is tidal at this point. I mean, it will rise and fall, and so what we do is we use the high tide point as our baseline of what to measure off of. So, I mean, anything we do in the Golden Isles, there's a very good chance you're gonna be accessing two tidal property. The main thing is that we coordinate with Glen County Engineering to make sure that our tailwater is set at that highest point for a king tide, and then we base off of that. If we were to go down lower than that, then that wouldn't be adequate, and we would not be able to pass Glen County's process of checking all of our work.
Good. And that Sea Harvest building is, I've been by there, is basically fallen in? Is there any squatters, or I understand there's some issues in that building that we can probably get rid of, a virtue of having?
Yes, sir, we went out to the site to meet with some of the neighbors, just to give them, to show them what we're looking at doing, and that was one of my questions, was what's currently being used, or what's, what's currently coming from that property, and that was one of the answers, that squatters, kids doing things they shouldn't be doing late at night. But basically, yes, it's, it's a, it's a haven for, for folks that would not be there if it was a new development with a gate and lighted and, you know, quality product.
And one last question, how much frontage do you have on 17 there? It's good.
To be honest, sir, I'm not prepared to answer that. I can look and see. The exhibit that we, that we provided gave the, we had a survey that showed that, but I could go to sit down and measure pretty quick, but I don't have that exam, that exact answer.
24 acres.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions?
Jake? One more.
Yes, sir.
So your, your buffer, you say 10-foot, would 20-foot maybe work? And, and are you going to put a fence up?
Yes, sir, if we do the, the 10-foot buffer, it would have a fence. If it went to 20-foot again, I would, I would defer to the developer to ask. The, the issue is, to the north, this is not as concerning in terms of, because you know, if you can see, it's just a very narrow property. This is, this tree line is not the wetland line. The wetland line actually extends further out, because it's more than just what you see, it's, it's the soils, and what Army Corps considers to be a wetland pocket, what you can't disturb without paying mitigation credits. And again, that's limited to the number of credits you can purchase in the amount of impact. It really gets tight through here, so, so shifting it down this way is, I mean, there's some better upland area up here, we could shift it this way, but to come in on each side, it really is coming down to a matter of feet. If we went to 20-foot, we'd probably come back at site plan and maybe see if there's something we could do for decreasing parking even more, but it would get very, very tight in that area. And, and again, if, if, if this buffer, or sorry, if this road was not here, and I drove this road as well, if this road wasn't here, I'd say, yes, we should be looking at what the impact would be, maybe looking at changing the architectural details, but there's already an existing large amount of space right here. So really, you're getting the 10-foot in addition to this probably 50-foot buffer is probably as narrow as we should go. So really, you're getting about 50-foot.
How much wetlands are on there?
I don't have those calculated down to the exact acreage, but it's a good, it's a good portion, I'd say it's about 50%.
Is it, is it like Cypress Swamp, or?
Sir, I, we use self consultants, because it's a weird science that I, we just consult with professionals, there's even one in the audience tonight, but we rely on what they tell us. I haven't got the report back, all I know is they've just finished the delineation, I think on Monday. But I'm, I'm not the right person to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions before we go to the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing, it's limited to 30 minutes each side. Those that wish to speak in opposition to ZM 5359, please come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, and gentlemen, I want to thank you, those were awesome questions, and, and I appreciate Robert Civil Engineering for, for answering those, it really helps us. So my name's Joanna Eberly. I've lived in Glen County since 1986. I grew up on St. Simons, moved over to Brunswick about eight years ago into our community back here. I'm off of Old Bell Point, and I'm the one that you see right here that's closest to the property, so I don't know if you can point.
You've got her.
Ooh, technology at its finest. Here we go, right here, this is my house, okay? So this is my property line. This back here is just being used by a gentleman, he puts his truck there sometimes, but it stayed very natural, and he hasn't done much to it. So, anyway. While we very much enjoy, you know, having those woods and a natural habitat, we've been spoiled rotten, actually, for the past eight years. I actually moved off of St. Simons because of such development, like we're looking at with the Verandahs, it just, one on top of the other, and, you know, this is, this is heartbreaking, because, you know, I love Glen County, I know that it's very important for us to continue to grow, and I want us to thrive, but I want us to do it the right way. And, you know, my intention is not coming here, you know, just to voice my concern, but rather to appeal to all of you as a fellow citizen, wanting the absolute best for our citizens of our communities, as well as our economic well-being. And I just want to get a clear understanding, actually, you, you've kind of laid it out, and, and it's, I, the buffer is, is a very concerning thing. I have these printed out, I don't know, Mr. Mumford, if you are familiar, and I'm sure you are actually, with section 613 with the buffers. And I have them printed out, I don't know if that's appropriate, this is my first time doing anything like this, but can I pass these out for you gentlemen to, to look at? And I've highlighted the pertinent stuff. Thank you.
And you do need to be cognizant of your time, you're about halfway in.
Okay, thank you. So basically, I have, we have children, I have a three-year-old and an eight-year-old, excuse me, I'm glad he's not eight. We've all moved and chosen to remain in the neighborhood, right, for privacy, for safety, for the charm, just to name a few. My three-year-old and my six-year-old little boys, we spent most of our time playing outside in the backyard and in the front yard, and having, after, after having privacy for our family for eight years, should you leave such a small buffer like has been indicated? Or, I mean, it's hardly any buffer, your wall would literally be at my chain-link fence. I'm, I'm a lady, so I don't spit, but I could definitely spit and touch that wall. And so, you know, people are gonna be looking down on us from a three-story building. What they have shown you in Thomasville is a two-story building. What we have been told is that this is gonna be a proposed three-story building. I don't know that he shared the proposal, like, so far, just what they have conceptually, but this, this is from Robert Civil Engineering, and it shows a large building, one of the large buildings bucking up right at the very front of, of my property line. And without any buffer, I mean, this is exactly why we moved to Brunswick, y'all, is, is for the charm and the privacy, and it's a unique, awesome, awesome place to live. Why are we doing this? We're Chapel Crossing, they're building monstrosities down there at 1,900 bucks a pop for two bedrooms, and y'all are gonna, you know, put something like this here? There's no guarantee this isn't gonna turn into Section 8 housing in the next six to eight years, once everything levels a bit, praying to God it will. But you know, this is, is sad, and I'm just asking for y'all to reconsider this, especially with no firm idea of what it's gonna look like. It's been a bird sanctuary, it's been wetlands, and it's just been really unique, nice privacy, protecting a unique community, and I'm, I'm a, I'm a young buck in there, you know, for eight years. People have been there for 30, 40 years, and then all of a sudden, this? And we have not witnessed, and I think I can speak for everybody, and I don't know who said that there's been squatters, yes, there's a homeless problem, but we have yet to witness that. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If you'd come forward and speak, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Neil Gilchrist. I'm a resident on Old Bell Point, right about there. And what I have to say, quality of life is a term we've all heard of, and the neighborhood is a big part of that quality. And what Verandah's is recommending is going to be a front to the quality of life in the, the section along Old Bell Point in area, because first of all, we've, we would go outside, we look at a nice, green, natural buffer of, all along this area. You know, we've, they've had the craft factory out there, but it's been separated by a natural, green buffer space on that. And as a result, we're gonna be looking at the fact that, we're gonna be looking, replace that with probably a fence and a few bushes, they call landscaping. That, that's not the same stuff, that's not a buffer, that's just a fence. Now, also too, with the preliminary site plan, they mentioned, they're talking about putting a couple of commercial buildings right along Yacht Road, including one, okay, down, down here, this end. What does a commercial building have to do with single-family dwellings? Quiet, single-family dwellings, we have a commercial building. The people who live along here, here, and here are going to be looking at the side of a building. We don't know if it's gonna be a doctor's office or laundromat. We don't know if it's gonna be a, a real estate building or a skateboard park. We don't have no idea what it's gonna be, but it does not fit in the, the quality of a quiet, single-family dwelling residential area, and as a result. Now, they brought some interesting points, you know, the Geod act, access is questionable, the wetlands are major questionable, the, now, I am a photographer, a, a natural, a natural photographer, I have spotted and photographed about three dozen different species of birds, most of which fly over from that area. So there is a lot of destruction in that area as far as the quality of life on there, but anyhow, you know, a lot of us who live in this area are older, like myself. We don't know how many years we have left, but I would like to maintain in a quality environment, and what Verandah's is proposing is not a quality environment. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record, please.
My name is Troy Gray, I live down on Yacht Road. One, I'd like to address the situation, everybody keeps calling this thing behind my house a ditch, it's not a ditch, it's a tidal creek. There's manatees, there's sharks, there's trout, there's shrimp, crab, you name it, there's all kind of sea life back there. I watch it come and go twice a day. It's not a ditch. The, the issue is gonna start coming into, when they take all this land up here, I realize they're, on their proposal, they're looking at taking and making about a four, a five-plus acre pond there. That's reducing a lot of your usage in this land, just as my other neighbor Joanna was talking about, you're gonna be backed up right here. My concern is, when you start taking all this property right here, and you start closing, you, you pave that, you put up buildings and, and roofs, water can't go anywhere. They're saying, yes, we're gonna build a pond, and we're gonna control, you know, keep all that water there. At some point, that water's gonna overflow. We're already having flooding issues back there now as it is, with no rain at all, and some of these king tides that we've had, we've already flooded. I flooded during Hurricane Nicole, again, we had no rain, that was just simply a tidal surge that came in and did this. There's several problems all up and down the inside of that creek, we have more trees down, the erosion through there is unbelievable, I watch it from both sides, not only mine, but I watch it from the other, I've already lost, since I've been there for three years, I've already lost about two feet of my property on that, on the creek side. What's gonna happen when they start adding more water that's gonna come into this creek? They have a ditch that runs in front of this property already, that water runs through there constantly now. It's, it's become a natural-flowing creek as it stands. I have to wonder, when you look at the expansion of Highway 17 up here as it goes on around, and I'm also not sure that anybody understands exactly what flows into this creek. Everybody thinks that it stops at Pletsey, it does not. We get water flow all the way from the airport, that comes all the way through, and finally exits out down through the creek in the back behind my house. How much more can we take? We're, we're, we've already wiped out a bunch of trees along 17, the noise factor there's already increased exponentially. What's gonna happen when we clear the rest of this out? How much more do we have to listen to? But where's this water gonna go? Has there been an impact study done about the drainage just from the impact of 17 being expanded? That you're about to cover up more land, that water's gotta go somewhere. Eventually, it's gonna end up behind my creek. And my concern becomes what happens when we start flooding back there. Thank y'all.
State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm Julie Ross Kalif, I am a resident and property owner on Old Bell Point Road. I share the concerns already expressed by my neighbors, but I'd like to add a couple other points. As you know, as you've heard, this retention pond drains into the tidal creek across Yacht Road. The applicant has stated they intend to increase the size of the pond and install a gate. Adding acres of parking will potentially drain the pond, into the pond, will increase the amount of oil and antifreeze and other pollutants into the creek. When a floodstorm occurs, how can we be sure that the pollutants in the hot water from the asphalt are not released into the creek where manatees, dolphins, and other wildlife are known to be? Currently, the property itself is host to all manner of wildlife, including turkeys, eagles, and hawks. The wildlife will be displaced when the property is clear-cut for the development. Now, I know the plans that the applicant have, have shown are conceptual, but the building placement is concerning. I won't rehash what you've heard, but I will say that the pond in the conceptual drawing is enormous, and it forces all the buildings to the extreme edges of the property. So this, this means that the, the Eberleys are gonna have a building in front, right in front of them, there's gonna be a commercial building and three apartment buildings close to Old Bell Point Road, three stories, looking right into these houses. It's, it's just detrimental to, to, and this is a very small road that, that faces. I also want to address, the engineer representing the developer has stated, one of the reasons to develop this property is because it is open and anyone can go in there and hang out. You could say that of any undeveloped property. However, the neighbors have not observed any such activity. In my nine years of driving back and forth across, in front of this property every day, I've only seen rabbits and cats starting in and out, I've never seen humans. After this property is built, we can be assured there will be many people roaming the neighborhood, particularly if access is from Yacht Road. If this property must be developed, this man has rights to his property, there are been... better suited uses that will not destroy the neighborhood, like retail, office space, storage, things of that nature. But a three-story apartment building, looking down over the edges of this property, is completely going to destroy this community. Thank you.
I'll try to be brief. Some of you asked some good questions at the, earlier, before you opened the public hearing. And I hope you'll ask some more. And I hope you will ask your new Director of Community Development, Toby Harris, to, as part of his learning experience, getting to know Glen County, to figure out how many, as yet unbuilt apartment complexes, apartment buildings, condos, and basically rental properties have been approved and not yet built in Glen County. What we're in danger of creating here, on this particular site, and others I can point to, is, are some of the slums of the future. Now, the applicant has shown you some pretty pictures, but these are concepts. Do we really need that much new potential rental property in Glen County? Yes, people are losing their homes, there's a lot of foreclosures, a lot of flipping going on. But this is not the way to solve the problem. I suspect you're gonna pass this, I hope you won't. I would at least hope you defer this to a later meeting, that you leave the public hearing open, and continue it at another meeting. That's not the way you do things, but maybe you should start doing things. But I want to leave room for others to object.
State your name for the record, please.
Sherry Nouse. I live right across from Joanna on Old Bell Point. So my home is facing the property to be developed. So every time I look out at any window in my house, I'm gonna see a three-story building, the back of a three-story building, that's gonna be my view. Five years ago, my husband and I moved from out of state, purchased this property because it was beautiful, it was quaint, it was a quiet little neighborhood where we can enjoy being outside. And this is gonna destroy this neighborhood, and it is really not what we had in mind five years ago when we bought this. And again, I would reiterate, I mean, how many apartments are enough? It's all the way down Chapel Crossing, apartments are being built. Now further down Glen Avenue, all the apartments and townhomes that are proposed that are gonna be built. I mean, and this is a small property, full of wildlife right now. Every night, we have an armadillo that visits our front yard. We don't, I mean, we love the nature that we witness every day, and that's gonna be destroyed. There's no question about that. That's, that's gonna be leveled and cleared, and all of those animals that were also living, and the wildlife, the birds, everything, living in the trees that were just cleared to widen the highway. Where do they all go? Now they're probably in there, where are they gonna go when that's destroyed? So that wasn't what we had in mind five years ago when we bought that. We never foresaw three-story apartment buildings being put in there. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Sherry Pruitt. I'm a resident of Yacht Road. I've lived on Yacht Road for over 20 years now, alongside the best neighbors, I have to say. Middle-class working families. This includes small business owners, single working women, retired couples, and the elderly. The Yacht Road entrance is over capacity and is difficult to get out as it is in the morning. We have rentals down at Hidden Harbor condos that have burdened our streets and increased the traffic to full capacity. Often, I have to turn right, get in the suicide lane, make a U-turn, just to get to work in the morning. It makes no sense to add a multifamily on a main road instead of commercial, as it is currently zoned for. If you add 150 units, not only would it be almost impossible to get off of our neighborhood, but then you add approximately 25% of our neighborhood is retired and elderly, it's a tragedy waiting to happen. So I want to point out on your report, page two, number four, the question is whether the zoning decision will result in a use which will or could cause excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. And the answer to that was, none of the agencies that reviewed this application indicated there would be an excessive use or burdensome uses. Where are these agencies and the impact studies? The schools across the streets already have issues and burdens, our roads have issues and burdens. Prior to the condos being put up, the commissioners agreed to do a traffic study before proceeding to determine the impact. That never happened. They just built over 300 units, less than a mile from us, and they haven't even opened yet, just off Canal Road. There are so many old hotels and buildings all over Glen County that need to be refurbished. What about turning those into workforce housing or apartments and renewing our community's aesthetics at the same time? And leaving the commercial zoning for commercial growth? That would be more responsible approach for our community. We are all for growth, we just want to be mindful that it's the right kind of growth to the future of Glen County. So with that, I would say I would like for you to deny the zoning. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition? Please state your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name's Greg Nouse. I live on Old Bell Point, my wife Sherry was up here just a few minutes ago. We live up here across from Joanna, again. And first of all, they're gonna make this, to get enough water, to hold water, they're gonna have to make this thing huge. So like they said, they're gonna build all this crap around the outside, and we gotta look at it from here. And poor, these people live along here, I dread, I would not want to live there, because you're gonna see three-story, 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 right down along there. And it's just crazy. And Lord knows what it did to our, is gonna do to our property value. I mean, I invested my home my whole life, we pay for our houses, to have something to retire on or have something of our own. And they're gonna, it's gonna knock the value down, who knows, $50,000, $60,000, because they put all this junk up here that we don't want to look at. I mean, we get, it's, it's just out of this world crazy. And as far as the entrance goes here, if they can't put an entrance here on 17, they shouldn't be allowed to do it. Because this yacht, this yacht road, they put entrance, exit over here, it's been stated many times, getting out of here is a joke, because you can't see, this bridge is right here, and new cars are like zooming. So it's just gonna be a major mess. And then, if they put entrances and exits over here on this side, I would propose that they block off Old Bell Point Road. Block it off, so nobody can turn down that street. Because what's gonna happen is, they're gonna start coming in here, coming down there to get in there. And our road is only, it's not wide enough for two cars. Old Bell Point is not wide enough, you gotta get in the grass to pass each other. And it's, so I would propose, well, this will be later down the road, which I hope I don't have to worry about, blocking this off, and putting a no outlet sign up here somewhere, so nobody comes in that way. Because I don't want these people coming around here, oh, we're gonna sneak up here, we can't get out down here, so we're gonna go up here, up Old Bell Point, and go out up here. You know, I mean, like, it's just too much traffic, and we live in a quiet, peaceful neighborhood. And I just think it's absurd with all the other buildings they have going up around this county, they don't need to put it there.
All right, this will be the last speaker, we are at our 30 minutes already. So state your name for the record, please.
Brenda Keane. I live, my husband's already spoken, the second house from the end of Yacht Road, Yacht Road, on Old Bell Point, facing the woods, exactly where there's gonna be a commercial building or a three-story apartment. I've been there 45 years. And that road will not support any more people. The guy said that there was 50 feet, that they didn't need a bigger buffer zone, that road is supposed to be two-lane, and like this gentleman said, you have to get on the right-of-way grass, which they don't always keep cut, to pass somebody. There's no way that we want all that traffic. And another thing that hasn't been mentioned that I brought up at the last meeting is noise. A 10-foot fence is not gonna keep us from hearing the music on the third floor across the road. I know how young people are, and look how many shootings have been in the apartment complexes in Glen County. We have a quiet neighborhood, and we don't have rowdy people in our neighborhood, and we don't want any rowdy people in our neighborhood. And they say they're gonna build high-class apartments. Well, it don't matter, they'll go get, get help, and they'll end up in those apartments, and then they'll shoot each other or shoot us. We just don't want this in our neighborhood. It's been a good neighborhood, a quiet neighborhood, for the 40-something years I've been out there. And I'm glad I'm old, because I wouldn't want to live there anymore. If I could move, I would.
Thank you. That will close the, that portion of the public hearing. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5359, please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good evening, Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and speak for my five minutes in favor. What I'd like to speak about are the, the points that were brought up tonight that I wrote down, and the ones that are within our control. Like I said, the developer is here, can answer quite a few questions about buffers and intentions for the property, as well as existing entitled uses as well. For starters, to answer, I think it was Commissioner Clark's question about the right-of-way length, we've got 1,577 feet of right-of-way frontage along 17. In terms of drainage, when we have a development of any sort, and what we do is we take the existing conditions, exactly what's there now, there's runoff coming off of that site. No matter what, there's always gonna be runoff coming off of a site unless you have a way to keep it, trap it on-site and let it infiltrate over time. So what we do is we take those conditions now, as they currently state today, and make sure that our, our future conditions will be less than existing conditions. So yes, there is already some water in that ditch, but if we make our ponds larger and keep more on-site, we will have less runoff than what's there today. That's a very important point in terms of the drainage study, in terms of the drainage mitigation plan. In terms of housing, yes, there are a lot of apartments currently being designed right now, I'm a part of quite a few of those. However, the market dictates the need. There was an article in the Brunswick News on January 24th where Governor Kemp was quoted saying rental home shortages across Georgia and this county is a concern. So yes, developers are finding good pieces of land and providing good quality projects that will in turn have good quality housing for folks who are going to be working in our neighborhoods, working in our schools. This is the type of development that would support those kinds of housing efforts. In terms of the comment made about people using the site, I would not have just said that without having, having heard it firsthand. My integrity would not allow me to say something false. When I met with the neighbors, I asked, I can't say exactly who did, because I don't exactly remember, but I did ask the exact question, knowing full well what the answer was gonna be of, of what's going on in that building right now. So I do understand there are animals, in terms of people using that site, that was a quote, I can't substantiate as to how many or how often. But again, I just hope that it is known that I did not just come out of thin air with that, that was a quote directly from a resident that lives in that neighborhood behind, when we came out to the site before the MPC meeting, to walk the site, walk the neighborhood, and show the existing conditions of what's out there right now. So I appreciate their time to kind of voice their concerns, and we think it's a good time to speak about those right now. Other than that, access, like we said, our best, our, we have the intention of accessing off of 17. The developer, Mr. Lucas, can speak on that a little bit more. No matter what, through the civil design phase, they're gonna require us to get a traffic study. Whether it's during site plan or civil construction plans, usually we try to do that during the civil phase, when we're actually doing the design of the ingress and egress. But I went ahead and asked Mr. Stewart if he was willing to do that as a condition of site plan, and he said yes. So we would get that traffic study engaged, completed, as well as show on-site plan, which is a time to show ingress and egress, the layout of the site, and actually where the buildings will go. That's, that's a commitment we can make as well, that we will do that traffic study for the site plan phase. Other than that, like I said, the developer's here, and my time's about up, but I am willing to stay behind if there's any specific questions as well. Thank you. Have a minute? Walk and see that minute to Mr. Lucas then. Thank you, sir.
Hey, my name's Lucas Stewart, I'm the developer for the property, and just want to thank you all for letting me present to you. I've made my notes on my phone, so don't want you to think I was checking text messages. The plan for it is for us to have six buildings, three stories walk up, and it would be a market rate product. We, we include amenities in our developments that wouldn't allow us to, for it to be a subsidized-type housing arrangement, so there wouldn't be any Section 8 housing in this, wouldn't, wouldn't turn into that because of the amount of money that'd be invested into the homes that would be there. One of the other questions regarding Yacht Road, the, the design that we have is very, I mean, we don't intend to change that design to be dictated only by the, the size of the wetlands, with the exception that it's my preference to move the buildings inward, because we have a nice water feature there with the pond that would take the place of the wetlands. So I hear the concerns, and that would be our preference as well, is to move them inbound if the soils are suitable. One of the other questions regarding, or concerns regarding Yacht Road, our intention is to take the southern part of the property, so I think it was gonna, I think it was gonna be divided somewhere in here. It's already zoned commercial, so we'd be allowed to put the building that we're proposing here, and we don't have any, we don't, we don't have any immediate plans for what that would be, but the, the driveway that we were showing off of Yacht Road would only be to service these two properties here, would not be for the multifamily development portion of it. So you wouldn't have that congestion that some may be worried about there. The zoning, I think, that was mentioned was the 16 units per acre. We're looking to keep the property, and I guess the, it's largely dictated by the wetlands, but we would, we would keep the property as natural as possible, and our density, if you take the 16 units per acre times the acreage that we have, would be substantially less than that, we'd be about two-thirds of what the density would allow there. Let's see. And then the last thing was just, you know, I'd heard that, you know, said that this is a neighborhood with, filled with middle-class people, that, that's exactly who we bring into our communities whenever we develop these properties. It's, it's the local firemen and the, and the nurses and the, and the people that are just like our other everyday neighbors right now. So it wouldn't, I don't think that there would be, should be a concern regarding this being some sort of substandard product or, or neighbors that you wouldn't want to have here, but they're just like everyone else in this room that would be living in these. So thank you for the opportunity, I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of ZM 5359, Verandis Plan Development? Anyone else? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close this portion of the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you. Any questions?
Is it possible to use a different... Is it possible to use a different kind of, I guess, effort to, for the drainage part? Could you do something underground that would allow you to move the buildings back with a larger buffer? And/or redesign, instead of having three-story, maybe do more two-story, but further back from, so you have a bigger buffer from the old Bell Point roadside? Because I, you know, I agree with the folk from the neighborhood that, you know, that really changes, I think, the area. And it just seems to me that it's like all the buildings on one side, and then you've got this big pond on the other. It's like there's another way to redesign this, to be able to keep more green space on the side where the neighborhood is.
I apologize, Commissioner. I assumed that question was directed towards me, but I think it's a combination of myself as well as the developer. So again, Jake Hightower with Robert Civil. The first question about the drainage for the underground detention, whether it's underground or above ground, the reason for the large pond in the middle is that wetlands, the Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over the filling of those wetlands. They don't have jurisdiction overturning those into extraction, turning those into larger ponds. So the size of the pond is, or the size, the width of it is dictated by the width of the wetlands. The depth of it is dictated by the size we need. We are going to have to, you know, we'll plan on clipping those wetlands a little bit, but in order to actually go in and fill those wetlands with underground detention or anything else, the Army Corps of Engineers will not let us do that. So the size of the pond is dictated by the size of that wetland pocket. Even if we did underground detention on the upland side where the parking is, it wouldn't allow us to move the buildings in closer. I guess that's my main point, is the size of the wetlands are dictating where we put those buildings. If we could put those buildings right here in the middle, absolutely, but this has been a non-maintained ditch that turned this into a wetland pocket, and we're just working within the constraints of the Army Corps of Engineers. There was a question also, you mentioned buffers as well, and the size. Can I defer to the developer unless we can talk about questions for me as well?
Well, there's not a way to purchase some credits or something?
Yes, sir. Up to half an acre is what you can do with a nationwide permit. If you go to a 404 permit, it's a much more arduous process that's financially prohibitive. At the end of the day, these...
Well, I mean, I understand, but this is, you know, you're changing really the quality of life for these folk in this neighborhood. So if you've got to go through something to maybe, for your neighbors, basically.
Yes, sir. Again, I'll let the developer speak to the use that's proposed. You did ask, again, I'll let him speak to the use. If I can make one more point, though, about drainage, because again, as an engineer, we do numbers, drainage, traffic studies, so that's why I'm deferring to him for those uses. You did ask about, is there anything else we can do in terms of for the drainage? And what we do, whenever there is a time where there's not a very clear outfall, this is not, that's not the case for this property, because it's very clear where that water goes. But what we can do is we can actually keep more water on-site than what's required. We're required to match the pre-development condition. We can actually increase that a little bit more to keep more on-site, so it's even less of a burden. But that was the answer as to what more we can do. And then, like I said, Mr. Lucas is here to talk about buffers and uses as well.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hightower, I know he mentioned the owner, that this end was commercial. Isn't the whole 24 acres highway commercial?
Yes, sir. The whole parcel is highway commercial. Our intention is we're doing a plan development text to allow us the additional use of medium residential. And so we would still keep this down here as commercial and up at the north end as residential, and the site plan would show how that would be delineated. And really, it's like we said, it's right here. It's kind of the split point as to where we take the residential to the north and keep the commercial to the south. But as it states now, yes, the whole parcel is entitled to highway commercial.
Yeah. And Ms. Leeve, could you mention what is allowed under highway commercial, if you don't mind? Or is it listed anywhere? So the folks, that this, those items could be built there right now, correct?
That is correct, yeah. These items could be built there now. The height limit would be 35 feet for highway commercial. The medium residential, there would be a 45-foot height limit, so there is an additional 10 feet for the residential if the PD's approved. But yeah, any of these would be allowed uses. And then these would also still be the same uses that would be allowed under this PD text if it's approved, because it'll be the mix of highway commercial and medium residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Hightower, in your presentation earlier today, you did a rendition of what this was to look like, and it appeared to be two stories in your rendition that you did. But now, I understand that your developer, your client, has said it's going to be three stories.
Mr. Dawsonson, if I may, sir, I have to respectfully disagree. Those images were brought to us by the county staff. We did not provide those images. Elevations are not required at zoning, they're required at site plan. In the MPC, I...
I understand that.
Yes, sir. I was very clear with the public. I said, that was my very first comment out of my mouth, was that this is intended to be three stories, is not intended to be two stories. It's the same style, but it will be three stories. And like I said, that was provided by county staff. We did not do a sleight of hand or try to show something different. Thank you, sir.
No more public comments, sorry.
Well, I get plenty of practice with this over on the island, and I told it was, kept telling you it was coming to a town near you. Just a couple thoughts, and, you know, haven't gotten a lot of practice on those issues. Well, we have a great neighborhood, obviously, around there, and great people in that neighborhood, and that's their life in that neighborhood. If you look at the demographics and the ages back there, you know, they're not young folks. A lot of young folks going to get up and move. And I know you've got a piece of property with a lot of constraints. I'm very familiar with Corps of Engineers. So I'm just putting it out for consideration. Maybe defer this vote tonight and kind of rally back up with the neighbors. And just some thoughts, you know, experience on me in the past, just like we did with the Yacht, the road, Third Street, Third Avenue, with no vehicle traffic. There are a lot of good things that you can employ that I think will help your community around you that's going to be supportive of your community. You know, I'm just, you're talking about height. You know, we went through that issue on St. Simon's. Unfortunately, my commissioners helped protect the integrity of the island over there, because we limited height and level of floors. And that's a big step where you're talking about. Then you're talking about most of your houses are along that buffer line. Well, I just remind my commissioner, we, you know, we did something like approve a mobile home park, same down in your district, and we moved the buffer out 20 feet in a campground, I think, if I remember. You know, it wasn't a 10-foot, it was 20-foot. I know you've got wetland issues out there. You know, those are just some of the things, I think you need definitely a wider buffer, planted buffer that protects the sound and the neighbors. Those are just some of my suggestions. I'm just putting it out to both sides. So I, you know, I would like to see you go back and meet with the neighbors and really come up with a plan that makes not two adverse neighborhoods, but one united community of neighbors around there. I'm just putting that out.
You had mentioned that you would have a desire to turn the buildings around and face them on the lake versus change. I think that would be a tremendous advantage and make it far more aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. I'd like to see further work on that and have some clarification from GDOT is my comment.
Mr. Stewart, I would be interested in hearing in your analysis, I mean, what were the economic development factors, the opportunities that you saw in this part of Glen County for your housing product?
Okay, thank you. So we worked in this area for quite a while. We do a lot of work at Fletchey, and then we perform work for the Department of Labor at the site there near the airport. We've watched it grow over the last decade since we've been working over here. We obviously are, I'm from Thomasville, Georgia, so we're a couple hours west of here, but being a fellow Georgian, know how popular this area's become and the growth that you've seen from the port. All that seems to be playing into this area. So that was, that, we've got a good local sub-base here that we work with, so that was a determining factor. And then we looked at a couple of different sites, and here locally, and we liked where we felt like town was growing, and we liked to be right on the edge of an area that we feel like is, the town is growing toward, and we felt like this, check the boxes for that. The other thing was I, as I mentioned, the density's going to be a good bit less than what would be allowed at the 16 units an acre. I like the water feature in the center. The wetlands that are seen as kind of a negative, I appreciate that, because I think it would add a lot to the development. Regarding Mr. Booker's question, the three units would be on either, on both sides. It wouldn't be kind of imbalanced. It would be three units on either side of the water feature. And we would be willing to buffer the northern edge, I'd say 25 feet. I think that we could probably work at where we could border the eastern edge by the 20 feet, given a total of the 70 feet, including the road. And the neighbors' concern, assuming that this were approved and it was constructed, then the people that live there will also be neighbors, and I think that they would also share concerns and would appreciate the privacy that the current neighbors are requesting. So it would certainly be in our best interest, you know, what they would want, I think, that would also be essential to us. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing I've made in my notes. Maybe the consideration is no access out the back of the property on Yacht Road?
I'm sorry, was that a question for me, or...
That was just a point of concern.
We're amenable to not having access out of Yacht Road, with the exception of being able to access the commercial property. Our intention is to use the existing drive off of 17 to service the homes, but we would need to have access. We wouldn't want the commercial property to have the same access as the residential property. So we'd want Yacht Road to be used for that, which, you know, wouldn't impact the traffic count very much.
Or your neighbors disagree?
All right, let's maintain quiet, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I want a motion to defer, to reconsider design and approval from GDOT on another entrance.
I have a motion from Commissioner Rafoski, a second from Commissioner Booker, to defer this action for...
Maybe a month?
For a month to our second meeting in March. Is there any other discussion? All right. So it was properly motioned and second. Motion by Commissioner Rafoski, second by Commissioner Booker. And being no other discussion, all in favor of deferring this until our second meeting in March, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. All right, Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, any questions, any comments? All right, this is a public hearing. So for CUP 5356, 826 Parkway, any that wish to come up and speak in opposition of CUP 5356, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Julian Smith. I live on St. Simon's Island. And...
And in 1946, I walked up and down along the beach. My father spent his summer vacation, St. Simon's, playing golf, with me carrying his golf clubs. And the beachfront was a series of little cottages, modest cottages. And the one that the applicant proposes to tear down is one of the last. If you walk along the beach in that section, you'll see one, three or four-story building after another, you'll see huge apartment buildings or condo buildings. So that little building is going to come down. At the start of the IPC meeting, before the start of the IPC meeting last month, I sat next to Venus Griffin, the applicant, the property owner, and I don't see her here this evening. I'm sorry she's not here and I don't blame her for not being here, and I'll explain why in a moment. So I asked her why she wanted to have a pool in the development setback. And she said, well, she had seven children and she wanted to be able to watch them. Well, her children ranged in age from, I think, 26 to maybe 13 or 14. There was so much pushback and so many questions from the IPC members that she became a bit upset. And when she got up to speak, even though she had not planned to speak, when she got up to speak, I think she was close to tears, maybe Mr. Hightower can tell you about that. And I asked her after the meeting, did she expect that kind of pushback from the IPC? No, she was surprised. Now, she's a realtor, she's a broker, and I don't think she's naive, but I think it may have come to her as a shock, that she thought, from talking to the community development staff, that she was going to get an easy ride. But it wasn't easy. Now, before you tonight, you have a, something that was not in front of the IPC last month, it is the floor plan for the three stories. This is quite different from what she was proposing originally. She was going to have parking along the road and the pool on the ocean side. And the pool and the fireplace and all of that is pretty much a cliche now, it's pretty standard. You see it all along St. Simon's and more particularly on Sea Island. The Joneses keeping up with the Joneses. If you look at the floor plan that is in your packet, that should have been in the packet for the IPC, because now we begin to see what is going on with this application. She's proposing a three-story building with parking underneath, which was not in the original plan. So this is really a new application and really should be referred back to the IPC, though I doubt you'll do that. She's got floor plans for a four and a half bathroom house, four and a half bathrooms, for three bedrooms, each with a full-size or queen-size bed. And in addition to the three bedrooms, a bunk room with room for three full-size beds. So that's six full-size beds, which means sleeping space for 12. Now, she doesn't have 12 children. Maybe she'll have grandchildren soon. This, I think, is a, designed as a rental, a moneymaker. And I think you should ask Mr. Hightower about the plans, rather, the purpose to which this building will be used. Now, she, to me and then to the IPC, talked about how this was for her family. Well, maybe it is for some weekends, but you know what's going on here. So I hope you will either deny this or send it back to the IPC for another, for another public hearing. You don't do it that way, but you really should. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record, please.
I'm Charles Hicks. I live at 800 Ocean Boulevard in the Seapoint Lodge condominium development between Sixth and Seventh Streets, hearted by this proposed development. And I attended the applicant's height variance hearing before this body in October. She sought 16 feet in height above the 28 feet max from the, and during the proceeding, she decided with, after huddling with their architect and advisor, that she could get by with three feet additional height, from 28 to 31. That was approved and she assured us all that this, well, I can't say that she assured us all, it was my impression from her comments that this would be her last application for a variance. It obviously isn't, here she is again. The problem is she wants to build a very large house on a very small lot, on a very short street with very limited parking. It will be very disruptive to her neighbors and we fear death by a thousand cuts, that she will seek approval piecemeal by constant applications for variances. So I urge you to disapprove this and I will confess that I am a lawyer, I have a high and reverential view of the law, it's sort of the glue that holds this all together. And I'm not claiming that society will unravel if you approve this, but I think the citizens of this county expect and are entitled to a somewhat uniform application of the laws of the county, including the zoning laws. And so I am, I'm largely vetting is what I'm doing. But we do fear just a never-ending parade of application for zoning variance until she gets this elaborate entertainment complex that she wanted all along. And I will point out that she admitted at the October hearing that her problem is caused by her own lack of due diligence before she purchased this lot for over a million dollars. She did not check zoning laws, what could and could not be built on it. She admitted that she relied upon the representation of person or persons who did not have the authority to assure her that she could build whatever she wanted to on this property. So that concludes my piece. I thank you for your attention and for your public service and I urge you to deny this application. Thank you very much.
Anyone else that would speak in opposition to CUP 5356? All right, seeing none, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Those that wish to speak in favor of CUP 5356, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, I'm Dan Bucy, Resource and Land Consultants, here to represent Ms. Williams, who is very ill, she couldn't attend tonight, along with all seven of her children. So I cannot speak to all the other comments that have been made about what she may use this house for. I only know that she has seven children and she loves St. Simon's and she wants to build her house here and she purchased this lot. What we're here for tonight is what can we, what are we allowed to do in the Beach and Dune setback? So I was not involved initially with the project when it went before the IPC, but the, the plans that were submitted to the IPC and to the Georgia DNR for a shore protection permit had labeled the porches that were in the shore protection and Beach and Dune setback, I think the number was about 266 square feet. They had been labeled as portion of house, which is not the case, it's not the house. It's a porch, a deck, a patio, whatever you want to call it, it's open air. You may not like how it looks, but it's not part of the building. Under state law, in the Shore Protection Act, we're delineating those lines, there's a portion of the dynamic dune field from the, you know, high tide line or the high watermark back to the revetment plus 25 feet, toe of dune, 25 feet, or in some cases, it's a structure built prior to 1979 and the structure itself would become the line of jurisdiction, it wouldn't extend back into the house, it'd be the outer part. That's only the heated and cooled space, it is not porches, it's not decks, it's not patios. The line of jurisdiction comes all the way back. And in some cases, that's really a, you know, a burden for the homeowner that now their porch or deck that they do to do maintenance on, reconstruction would then need a shore protection permit in those cases. It's not very common, but that is the way it's set up. The dynamic dune field definition is set by law, the structure itself is defined as an institutional, residential, commercial, or industrial building, not porches, not decks, not patios attached to those. So in this case, I believe the correct decision would be that this is, if you go to the side view, can I move those or? The architectural plans were given to y'all that were, I guess, were not available with the IPC, but, you know, it may look visually like it's the building, but it's an open air. Let me show here. This would be a side elevation view, is that correct, Mike? Yes, sir. So, you know, this is open air porches. These are columns on the outer seaward portion of it and, you know, floor level, second level, third level, whatever you want to classify those, but they are, again, open air, they are not the building itself, not under state law, and in my opinion, it should not be referred to as a house or the building itself under the Beach and Dune Development District. So. Yeah, let's go back to the site plan? Yeah. Yeah. So in this particular location, we actually, somewhere out in this area, in front of the seaward side of the lot, there's the, you know, the old Johnson rocks and then there's some bare sand. It's classified as a dune because it's got native grasses and more open sand. But it's, you know, not much of a dune. The pool, decking, the porches are all being proposed in what is now an existing lawn. And as far as, you know, impacts to the sand sharing system, we've got conditional uses allowed of a pool, pool decks, and this porch is our landward of that and certainly not a threat to the sand sharing system. So we would ask that you approve it as a conditional use, as shown on the plans. Thank you, I'm available for any other questions.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of CUP 5356, please come forward. All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Attorney? Here. Stefan, will you put the plan and commission, I mean, the recommended motion back up? Right, but it left, the porch, there is area of that porches that exceed into that 25-foot zone, right, from the house?
Yes.
And what are the diameters width of those?
So it's, yeah, I think it's approximately like 250 to 300 square, square feet, that's extending in.
But coming out, what is the diameter coming out from the house?
That, I don't, do y'all know that? The distance?
12, 12 foot, eight, 10, six.
So, yeah, it looks like, is that a nine or a five? Is it five two? Neither one of us can see well enough, I think it's nine, I think it's nine feet two inches.
Beyond, beyond the line?
So, yeah, into the line, right. So it'd be this, basically this measurement here, from this point where the cursor is to...
Right.
Yeah, to this outer, outside boundary of the decks.
And all of that porch, all of that porch exceeds into the application zone?
Yeah, the majority, the only, the only piece that does not is this upper, this upper piece right here, so this...
Six foot six within the setback line at the top, the very top of the porch.
Oh, all the way up? Oh, right here?
Six foot six and nine foot. Nine foot two on the bottom.
Like I said, I get all the practice through the island request. So with the IPC, what was their real concern that put the motion together like it was? Was the porches?
Yeah, when, when the project first came to the IPC, we did, we did not have the elevations and so we, we did not have that level of detail of exactly what we were looking at. So we were treating it as, you know, as part of the building, it could have been, you know, master bedroom, or we, you know, we were just treating it as, as building. And our staff opinion still is that, even though it's deckings, it's still building. But, but IPC level, I think they were really most concerned about the structural pieces. So that's why they were not comfortable with the building as well as the fireplace, the outdoor fireplace too.
Well, I just, for conversation to my other Commissioners way in, I go to Savannah a lot, I stay at the Western across the river, because I like the view back. But most of their rooms, you don't have a porch going out, you've got where, you know, a fencing, but you can open the windows and enjoy the breeze and the view, but it's not a full porch. So that's my concern here, you know, with the project extending out into this zone and I think that's, I just want you to reaffirm what the IPC was concerned about, that was the real issue.
Right, and really, you know, staff's direction at, your staff's discussion at the IPC level was that this portion of the building was not even eligible to be considered as a conditional use permit. So our feeling on this was that it was not something that could even be applied to be as part of a conditional use permit, it just was not allowed at all. And so, but then the applicant said, you know, these are decks, you know, can you take another look? And they brought the additional information, so, you know, we looked at it a little, little further, but our, our opinion is still structural.
So I met the lady and her children, Mr. Attorney, the other thing, question, we talked a little bit of this back and forth. Whatever is approved, is there a caveat that can be added that this would not be applicable, be a property that would be applicable to apply for a short-term rental license?
Not, not through this process, Commissioner, not through the rezoning process.
Because, you know, one of the major complaints I get all the time, especially along the beach, is excessive number of people in a house, in a rental house with an excessive number of cars and so that this couldn't be tagged in on anything here.
I would not recommend it be tagged along with this rezoning application. You know, I think if, if there are concerns on a greater level, my recommendation would be to open up the short-term rental ordinance and address those things through that ordinance and not through the rezoning process.
Well, my feeling is that the porch should be moved back to the line. I'm just not making a motion yet, I'm just putting it out from other Commissioners. Some of y'all are more builder types, so maybe it's, maybe it's not worth the bone. Some of y'all are more builder types, so maybe it's, maybe it's not worth the bone for the approval, but that seems to be the real crawl that the IPC had was the extension of three porches out into that setback zone. When we approve most of these, their plannings are ground-level improvements. They're not above-level, you know, improvements.
I was under the impression that the Island Planning Commission didn't have a problem with the pool and the decking. They had a problem with the structure, with the fireplace, the roofing of the fireplace. And that's what they were wanting to deny in their recommendation. Am I missing something here?
Well, a lot of the conversation was about the porches coming out into that zone, too. That's why I wanted them to affirm that.
Even though they, they did approve it.
Can we see, can we see that motion back up?
Hey, it's always been, my thoughts, Stephanie, that even if the eaves in a house are in the setback, they're not allowed.
Yeah, that, that would be my interpretation when we're talking about this development setback. I mean, it's, it's a vertical line, so anything extending would not be allowed because this is, this is a beach and dune setback. I mean, it's, it's different than the yard setbacks that we have, you know, in properties. It's a different animal.
Erin, what do you think on that?
I've, I've never heard it put the way that it's been put tonight. I've always heard if it's in the setback, it's in the setback, or it's not in the setback.
Well, that's, that's right. But I think, you know, right now, we're, we're looking at the, going into the, the beach and dune area, which is where this is encroaching into that area. That's where the conditional use is being applied for.
It, it doesn't affect the county setback.
On that side?
It is, so with the setback.
It's got to be with the setback.
It's into the beach and dune.
It is.
And the beach and dune was set up for that beach and dune, not physical building parts of the building.
Well, consistent with the Shore Protection Act, if a cantilever's out over, they're going to regulate it, require a permit, same as what, you know, you're doing and what we're here for tonight. You know, if I could ask Mr. Mumford, I would ask him, is there, does he have an opinion about the state definition of a structure and allowable conditional use of a deck? And what's the difference between a deck, a porch, patio? If this was, you know, would, would you approve a, a ground-level deck, but you can't have a second-story deck in, in the jurisdiction line? Cantilevering over something that's developed underneath it? I guess I'm just not understanding the environmental impact portion of it. Is it how it looks? Is it, the function is the same?
So always, always been my understanding that a pool deck or, or a driveway, that, that doesn't really count. But when you come off of the structure, like, like an eve, because I know when I was on variance, if an eve comes into the setback, it's, they've got to go for a variance or, so you're, you're saying if it's attached to the house.
If it's attached to the building. That, that's, that's the way I've always known it. I mean, if I'm wrong, I'm, I need to be corrected.
Yeah.
But I mean, that, that's just.
I don't have the answer for you. I just knew, you know, I used to build decks. I attached them to the house almost every time. And we're talking about.
In the setback?
No, sir.
Okay. Let me ask you this.
I'm just saying, from a pure definition standpoint.
Whatever the decision is by the board tonight, it's still subject to DNR approval. Is that correct?
That's, that's right. I was just going to say that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can't even.
So we approve and they, they can disapprove, and it's, it's a dead issue.
Certainly could, yeah. Yeah, we can't even get to them until we get zoning approval.
I'm going to make a motion to deny and pass that judgment on to the DNR ultimately.
Well, if you, it's conditional, though. Yeah, if you deny it, then we can't even submit it to the DNR. We've got to have a, a clean zoning approval. The law states a letter from the local zoning authority certifying that the activity does not violate local zoning ordinance.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to approve CUP 5356 as presented and let the DNR decide.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Clark. Is there any other discussion? No other discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? So that's five to two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, 2023 Commissioner Liaison Appointments. There are four appointments tonight to these that we will name. These are non-voting positions. These are liaison positions only. And to the Golden Isles Convention and Visitors Bureau, I'm appointing Commissioner Swett. To the Golden Isles Chamber of Commerce, I'm appointing Commissioner Tosterson. To the Bronson and Glenn County Development Authority, I'm appointing myself. And to the Glenn County Airport Commission, I'm appointing myself. Any discussion on that, gentlemen? And Mr. Attorney, we don't need a vote on that, correct?
Just ratify your, your, your appointments.
All right, could I get a motion to ratify those appointments?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve the appointments as presented, and a second by Commissioner Fendig. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
I understand.
You understand? So that is six, four, and one abstention. There was no one that signed up for the public comment period tonight. We do have call to go into executive session at 8:47 in the evening. I need a motion to go into executive session for a brief.
I make a motion to go into executive session for a brief.
Potential and pending litigation.
For pending litigation.
And potential.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Rofolsky to go into executive session for pending litigation.
And potential.
And.
Potential litigation.
And potential litigation. All in favor? All right, we stand in recess. All right, we stand in recess.